The meeting of the Aurora City Council for June twenty seven, twenty twenty-three is hereby called to order. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Alderman Yamas?
Here.
Alderwoman Garza?
Here.
Alderman Masiacos?
Present.
Alderman Donnell?
Here.
Alderman Franco?
Here.
Alderman Seville?
Here.
Alderwoman Smith?
Here.
Alderman Bug?
Here.
Alderwoman Bade?
Here.
Alderman Lash?
Here.
Alderman Warman?
Here.
Mayor Urbans, present.
Is there most approved appointment Sergeant Arndt for this meeting moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Garza? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries by voice vote. As we prepare to celebrate Independence Day next week, I'll ask any veterans or active military members in the audience to join me to lead the Pledge of Allegiance. And following the pledge, you know, as we prepare to lay our beloved Alderman, Alderwoman Hartburns to rest this week, tonight's invocation will be led by one she considered a brother and friend, as well as a colleague, Ward Nine Alderman and Church Elder Edward Bug. First, Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance. To the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, veterans. Alderman Bug.
Thank you. Let's pray. Father God, we thank you for being with us tonight. I ask you to give us wisdom and insight to do the will of the city, of the citizens, of the businesses, of the residents. Lord, we ask a special blessing over the Hartburns family this week. Everyone who knew Alderwoman Hartburns, everyone who felt her impact, be with them as we ask for peace and serenity during this time. Bless our first responders, our police and fire, special prayer for our veterans and those who are serving us for freedom. We ask all this in the name of your son. Amen.
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 Thank you, sir. Let's go on to the next portion of the agenda. No presentations this evening. Madam Clerk, will you read the first item under mayor appointments?
Twenty-three zero four one five, a resolution approving the reappointments of Sarah Ramos and Lillian Feinberg, as well as the appointment of Kevin Martinez to the Aurora Youth Council.
Motion.
There's been a motion moved by Alderman Garza, seconded by Alderman Franco. Are there any questions or discussions regarding this resolution? There being none. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Donnell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade?
Yes.
Alderman Lash?
Yes.
Alderman Warman?
Yes.
Eleven yes, zero no.
Motion carries. The resolution is approved. Do we have Sarah Ramos, Lillian Feinberg, or Kevin Martinez in the room with us today? If we do, if you could please stand. We recognize? All right, let's give them a round of applause. When we're done with mayor appointments, I'm going to ask you to step up to the front and we're going to look to take a picture with if you can. So if we have some staff over in our media department, if you, if any of you would come over with a camera so you can take pictures of the folks willing to serve the city of Aurora. Madam Clerk, will you read the next item?
Twenty-three zero four two one, a resolution approving the reappointments of Mark Straits, Fawn Clark Peterson, and Natasha Ritzma, as well as the appointment of Ginger Ingram to the Public Art Commission.
Motion.
There's been a motion made by Alderman Garza, seconded by Alderman Smith. Are there any questions or discussion on this item? There being none. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Donnell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade?
Yes.
Alderman Lash?
Yes.
Alderman Warman?
Yes.
Eleven yes, zero no.
Motion carries. The resolution is approved. Do we have Mark Straits, Fawn Clark Peterson, or Natasha Ritzma, as well as Ginger Ingram, in the room with us today? If so, please stand up so we can recognize you. All right, let's give those a round of applause. Thank you for your willingness to serve. Madam Clerk, will you call the next item?
Twenty-three zero four two seven, a resolution approving the reappointment of Abjit Chudri to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Motion.
There's been a motion by Alderman Garza, seconded by Alderman Franco. Are there any questions or discussions on this item? There being none. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Donnell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade?
Yes.
Alderman Lash?
Yes.
Alderman Warman?
Yes.
Eleven yes, zero no.
Motion carries. The resolution is approved. Do we have Ms. Abjit Sandri here in the room with us? So please stand so we can recognize you. Not here, we'll thank him anyway for his service. We appreciate it. Madam Clerk, read the first, next item?
Twenty-three zero four two eight, a resolution approving the reappointment of Christopher Minnick to the Aurora Police Pension Board.
Motion.
There's been a motion made by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Garza. Any questions or discussions on this item? There being none. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Donnell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade?
Yes.
Alderman Lash?
Yes.
Alderman Warman?
Yes.
Eleven yes, zero no.
All right, motion carries. Resolution is approved. Chris Minnick is our CFO. I'm not sure if he's in the room with us, but let's go ahead and give him a round of applause for his willingness to serve in many capacities. Madam Clerk, read the next item.
Twenty-three zero four three nine, a resolution approving the appointment of Jill Levine and Michael Zafran to the Grand Army of the Republic Memorial Commission.
Motion.
There's been a motion by Alderman Garza, seconded by Alderman Franco. Are there any questions or discussions regarding this resolution? There being none. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Donnell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade?
Yes.
Alderman Lash?
Yes.
Alderman Warman?
Yes.
Eleven yes, zero no.
Motion carries. The resolution is approved. Do we have Jill Levine or Michael Zafran here, Zaffran here? All right, let's give them a round of applause. Thank you very much, kind sir. And everyone that just joined one of our boards of commissions, can you meet me down the well of, of our council chamber here? And I'd like to take a picture with if you could.
A little bit of nepotism here. Alderman Seville is related to my wife.
Wow.
We met before at MGRO.
MGRO, fourth of July.
All right, thank you. Give her another round of applause. All right, let's go on to the next portion of our agenda, public comment. Madam Clerk, do we have any members of the public wishing to offer public comment?
We do, Mr. Mayor.
All right, will you read the rules of public comment, please?
Pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, all persons shall be permitted an opportunity to address public officials under the rules established and recorded by the council. Under our rules, any person may address the city council for up to three minutes with a maximum of thirty minutes allotted for all public comment. No person other than the timekeeper or the chair for the purpose of maintaining order may interrupt a person recognized for public comment during his or her comments. Members of the city council shall not engage with nor respond to a speaker during the time set aside for public comment. Staff is directed to follow up with members of the public with respect to any concerns raised during public comment within the scope of the city's authority following the adjournment of this meeting.
Will you call the first speaker, please?
Brian Dahl.
Good afternoon, Mr. Dahl. You have three minutes to speak, beginning now.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening, city council members. Brian Dahl, president of the Fox Valley Billion Trades, Aurora, Illinois. On behalf of the affiliates of the Fox Valley Billion Trades, and we have many in attendance here tonight, if I get them to stand. As we stood in front of you back in the fall of twenty twenty-two in support of the redevelopment agreement for the new casino, and at last week's committee of the whole meeting, we are here again tonight in support of agenda items twenty-three dash zero four four zero and twenty-three dash zero four four one. Last week, I spoke about how the new casino project will be constructed under a project labor agreement benefiting local and surrounding men and women, contractors, communities, and taxpayers by ensuring this project is completed on time and on budget, requiring employee training, encouraging that public investments benefits local communities. I also spoke about how with the construction industry already flourishing throughout our region, this project will continue to provide months and months of continued employment for our union brothers and sisters. And with the increase of additional workforce needs, it will hopefully provide an opportunity for new men and women to enter the trades as a career. We know from attending last year's council meeting that approved the redevelopment agreement for the new casino, there were some in the public who spoke in opposition, including the newly elected alderman at large. This project is not an additional financial burden to the residents. The established TIF monies will not be covering, will be covering the bond obligation. And if the TIF monies do not cover, Penn would be making up the difference. The economic impact and return on investment for the city makes the new casino project a no-brainer to support, not only for the union construction jobs this will create, but also the projected seven hundred permanent jobs within the new casino and hotel. Additionally, the economic impact of the casino at its new location and surrounding areas will be a key driver for that portion of the city. And once the old casino is removed, the economic impact for the downtown with its potential replacement will be substantial. So we respectfully ask each of you for your support on these two agenda items. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Call the next speaker.
Dick Firstonow?
Dick Firstonow? Dick Firstonow, you have three minutes to speak, beginning now.
Thank you, sir.
Good to see you.
Congratulations to everybody who was just elected and everybody who's been on this council, I know, for years, because I know some people have been here as long as I've been around. That's a long time. Okay. I'm, Dick Firstonow, I live at seven oh nine Zaniger Avenue in Naperville, Illinois. But in nineteen eighty-one, I bought condo units at Acorn Woods Condominium Association on the northeast side of town. We have a hundred and fifty units there. Linden Woods is right in front of us. There's a hundred and twenty units there. And right behind us is Walden Woods, and there's two hundred and seventy units. I want to tell you, since nineteen ninety-six, when the flood happened, and you all, some of you remember that. I certainly remember it. I've been on the board since nineteen eighty-one. And in nineteen ninety-six, when the flood happened, by about the year two thousand, we were all put in a floodplain, okay? Linden Woods has been paying twenty thousand a year. Acorn Woods has been paying forty thousand a year. And Walden Woods has been paying a hundred, I'm sorry, eighty thousand a year. It's been going on for years. And your constituents take that money out of their pockets every month to pay that bill in January out of those units. There's, so that's about five hundred and forty units there. And then there's a number of other streets along there, along Molitor Road, going to I eighty-eight, that are also still in the floodplain. A few years after the flood, the city of Aurora, and it was advertised in the newspaper, pulled about ten thousand truckloads of dirt out of that area just south of Molitor Road to get everybody else out of the floodplain. That helped get people out of the floodplain. And there's been water in there, not very often, once or twice in the last twenty-five years. You turned a part of it into a park, was very nice. But look, we need some help. And with this development that you got going on in, on the north side of the freeway there, we would like the city to take a look at helping us get out of the floodplain. I know it can be done. I was an alderman, I was a councilman in Naperville for twelve years, and we did that a number of times in our town. It's going to take some effort, it's going to take some money. But it needs to be done because you've got probably a couple of thousand people up there, residents up there, that are paying outrageous floodplain insurance. And it's an opportunity to do that. And I'm, my time is up, but I'd be more than happy to talk to anybody afterwards if you want to take a look and get into it a little more. It needs to be done, something that you folks need to do. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Good to see you. Madam Clerk, will you call the next speaker?
Mike Powers.
Mike Powers, you have three minutes to speak, beginning now.
Good evening, city council members. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak before you. I'm here this evening representing the tradesmen and women of Sheed Metal Workers Local Two Sixty-Five. I'd like to voice our support for the Hollywood Casino. Seldom do we have a project that could be as impactful as this. Projects like these are not merely about physical structure, but should be measured on the impact they have on the fabric of our community. The casino and other projects of this magnitude provide great economic impact, not only to Aurora as a city, but to the residents of Aurora and its surrounding communities. The skilled tradesmen and women taking part in construction will earn quality wages, working in safe conditions under reputable contractors. We are the people that live in and around Aurora, the people that spend their money within Aurora. An investment in a large construction project like this is an investment in every single person involved with it during construction and when it is operational. The casino will enhance the area surrounding it visually and financially. Local businesses near it will feel a positive impact as a result of the increase in visitors. I believe the phrase "a rising tide lifts all boats" is appropriate description for this. We support the casino because it is more than just a casino. It is a commitment to progress, a stimulant for development, and a magnet for investment. Thank you again for listening. Have a good evening.
Madam Clerk, will you call the next speaker?
Mercy Galicia.
Mercy Galicia, you have three minutes to speak, beginning now.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Mercy Galicia. Thank you for giving me this moment to talk to you. I just really wanted to thank everyone for helping and supporting our fundraiser festival that we had here at the Water Street Mall. It was very, very successful. Everybody was happy, the music, the, the weather was perfect. My volunteers didn't all show up, but oh, well. We, we survived. And again, August twelfth, we will be giving out the scholarships. I'd like to invite you again for that, so I'll come again. Thank you. Have a nice evening.
Do you have any other speakers, Madam Clerk?
We do, Mr. Mayor.
Call the next speaker.
Steve Hendry.
Mr. Hendry, you have three minutes to speak, beginning now.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Last winter, I found out that I needed to reconnect to the internet. And I, unfortunately, where I live, towers don't give me service. So I had to research cable. And when I went to Comcast, they told me about Internet Essentials. It's a, a service where it's fifty, fifty, the speed is, is fifty, fifty, whatever the term is for it, sorry. And it's, okay, that sounds great. Ten dollars a month. Great. Jeez, that's incredible. And then get to the next person on the queue, and they say, well, do you know about the ACP? And what's that? The Affordable Connectivity Program. And that's something that is open to households, for example, sixty, sixty thousand income for a family of four, or an individual twenty, just a little over twenty-nine thousand. If you participate in SNAP program, Medicaid, Lifeline, if your family, if somebody in your family receives free or reduced-priced school lunches, you qualify. That gets you thirty dollars credit in the program. And you can apply that to your ten-dollar internet, if that's what you get, or you can upgrade to a hundred, half faster speed, and that's twenty-nine. So you still, you use up all the thirty, which is, again, a great deal for all these people that still need to get connected. I know that, I just read there's a big deal going on, Build-A-Rod and E.O. Road, huge project out there for this type of, for what's going to be the future. And besides those things, for the kids, there's a hundred and fifty-dollar one-time towards a laptop. It's a great program. I know, I just was reading in the paper today, the Fed is doing, they're not, they didn't call it this, they call it, they called it something else. And, but it was a huge dollar project. I think part of the, I don't know if it's part of the infrastructure thing, or if it's another new project that's come up. But it's to, to get everybody connected because, like this said, and like I've heard here, it's a, you have to now. You don't have, you have to be connected to, to get through everything that you need to do in today's day. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Piggy, will you pull the gentleman aside and please talk a little bit about connectivity in Aurora and our broadband future in the city? Thank you. All right, that concludes our public, our, our public speaking. Let's go on to the public hearing. Madam Clerk, will you read the first item under our public hearing section of the agenda?
Twenty-three zero four six zero, public hearing on a resolution authorizing the acceptance of a grant award from the U.S. Department of Justice Community Oriented Leasing Services Grant Program in the amount of two hundred and ninety-four thousand, six hundred fifty-seven dollars and fifty-one cents, and the city of Aurora's use of grant funds to enhance the crisis intervention unit.
Is there anyone who would like to be heard for the purpose of public comment on this item? Is there anyone who would like to be heard for the purpose of public comment on this item? Motion to close the public comment. Say last time, is there anyone that would like to be heard for public comment on this item? There being none. There's been a motion to close the public hearing by Alderman Franco, seconded by Alderman Smith. Are there any questions from the aldermen before we entertain those motions? No question from the aldermen. There's been a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Donnell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade?
Yes.
Alderman Lash?
Yes.
Alderman Warman?
Yes.
Eleven yes, zero no.
The hearing is hereby adjourned. Next, we're here both the consent agenda and the direct council consent agenda in full. Would the clerk now please read both agendas in full? And let me just say, twenty-three dash zero four seven two should be moved to unfinished business for Alderman Warman to abstain from that item as he has a conflict in that matter. Madam Clerk, proceed.
Twenty-three zero three six six, a resolution to create the Ward Two Residential Property Improvement Grant to support Ward Two residents who want to improve their driveways and fences. Twenty-three zero three seven four, a resolution authorizing a two-year project management professional services agreement with Crow in Chicago in an amount of three hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars. Twenty-three zero three nine nine, a resolution authorizing the Ward Five Residential and Nonprofit Grant Program. Twenty-three zero four zero two, a resolution approving the purchase of forty-eight Tecton jury-based armless chairs and forty Tecton chairs-on-casters from Group Management Office Furniture in Aurora through the National Cooperative Purchasing Alliance contract in the amount of fifty-eight thousand, nine hundred sixty-seven dollars and forty cents. Twenty-three zero four one two, a resolution authorizing the Ward Eight Residential and Nonprofit Grant Program. Twenty-three zero four two zero, a resolution authorizing the city to accept a grant award of twenty-four thousand, six hundred fifty-eight dollars from the Morton Arboretum for the twenty-twenty-three Chicago Region earmark urban and community forestry support in the Chicago Region Grant Program, with the city to contribute matching funds of eight thousand, two hundred sixty-one dollars to improve the forest health of the downtown. Twenty-three zero four two two, a resolution authorizing the acceptance of the low bid from F.H. Passion S.N. Nielsen and Associates for the renovation of the Human Resources Department Office for six hundred eighty-three thousand, five hundred dollars, plus a ten percent project contingency amount of sixty-eight thousand, three hundred fifty dollars. Twenty-three zero four four four, an ordinance establishing the Music Events and Entertainment Commission under Chapter Two, Article Six of the Code of Ordinances. Twenty-three zero four four five, an ordinance amending Chapter Twenty-Five, Article Eight of the Code of Ordinances pertaining to raffles. Twenty-three zero four five zero, a resolution establishing a fee schedule for raffle licenses related to Chapter Twenty-Five, Section Eight, Raffles of the Code of Ordinances. Twenty-three zero four five one, a resolution to award the contract for the one fifteen through one twenty-five South Fordham Avenue and Lancaster Avenue Sanitary Sewer Improvements Project to Stokes Excavating in the amount of one hundred and sixty thousand, six hundred eighty dollars and zero cents. Twenty-three zero four five eight, a resolution authorizing the city to accept a grant award of two hundred and ninety-four thousand, six hundred fifty-seven dollars and fifty-one cents from the U.S. Department of Justice COPS office to enhance the Aurora Police Department Crisis Intervention Unit. Twenty-three zero four six three, a resolution approving the appointment of John Blickum as Assistant Superintendent of Water and Sewer Maintenance. Twenty-three zero four four eight, a resolution authorizing the execution of an easement agreement between the city of Aurora and Chicago Title Land Trust Company, trust number one one two two, for the vacant property located near the northeast corner of Eastern Avenue and East New York Street. Twenty-three zero four eight one, approval of the minutes of the Tuesday, June thirteenth, twenty twenty-three city council meeting.
There's a motion made by Alderman Garza, seconded by Alderman Smith. Are there any questions or comments from the city council, or any motions for any of the items to be removed from the consent agenda? There being no questions or comments, or no motions for any items to be removed, a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Donnell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade?
Yes.
Alderman Lash?
Yes.
Alderman Warman?
Yes.
Eleven yes, zero no.
Motion carries, consent agenda and a direct consent. Motion carries. Consent agenda and the direct counsel consent agenda are both approved. Let's go on to the next item, next section of the agenda, unfinished business. Madam Clerk, will you read the first item under unfinished business?
Twenty-three dash zero, four, four, zero, An Ordinance Establishing a Conditional Use Plan Development Approving the Hollywood Casino Plan Description and Amending Chapter Forty-Nine of the Code of Ordinances by Modifying the Zoning Map Attached thereto from B Three Business and Wholesale District and M One Manufacturing Limited District to B Three C Business and Wholesale District with a Conditional Use Plan Development for the property located at West Side of Farnsworth Avenue between Biltor Road and Corporate Boulevard. So moved.
Second?
Motion by Alderman Seville, second by Alderman Smith. Are there any questions or discussions regarding this resolution? Any questions or discussions? There being none. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Donnell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bog?
Yes.
Alderwoman Veid?
Yes.
Alderman Lash?
No.
Alderman Warman?
Yes.
Ten yes, one no.
Motion carries. The resolution is approved. Will you need to read the next item under new unfinished business? Madam Clerk?
Twenty-three dash zero, four, four, one, A Resolution Approving a Preliminary Plan and Plan for HC Aurora Subdivision Located on the West Side of Farnsworth Avenue Between Biltor Road and Corporate Boulevard. So moved.
Second?
There's a motion by Alderman Smith, second by Alderman Garza. Are there any questions or discussions regarding this resolution?
Discussion.
Alderman Lash?
Thank you, Mayor. During the last committee, the whole Alderman Franco had asked that I make an explanation for my position. I'm sure you also recognize that we were all sort of waiting for the presentation at the end with Alderwoman heartburns. But I do want to make sure that I address this, because there were also public comment was brought up. But I think I made a lot of these comments while just a citizen. But first and foremost is that Penn Entertainment made $2.75 billion. And then in 2020, in 2021, in 2022, 2.77 billion. So there's an argument here that could be made that we, as a taxpayer, should not be subsidizing this wealthy, multi-billion dollar corporation. The CEO made 65 million. We haven't yet seen, and that was in '21, we haven't yet seen his 2022 salary package yet. But as we look at just this agenda item, something to think about is that, well, first, let me just address the TIF issue, right? So I understand that the TIF will repay the municipal bond. But the part of that argument that's left out is that that TIF money is being siphoned away from schools, from parks, from all the other public taxing bodies. That's money that, were there no TIF, would be going to support those taxing bodies. So I haven't done the math on this specific project, but this is a multi-billion dollar company that can afford it. The next point that I would like to make is that we're looking also now as expanding a lot of the roadways. And I think this project with 16 million, it'll probably a lot more in infrastructure improvements to accommodate the casino. So I don't like to come forward without solutions. And both you and Alderman Yamas indicated that you wanted to have a genuine discussion on this. Back when I was seventeen, eighteen years old, I worked for McDonald's and helped open a store in Schaumburg, Illinois. And the McDonald's Corporation did their own traffic study, and then found out that if they put a turn lane across traffic, that they could get more customers and make more money. So they paid for that infrastructure improvement. Now, I don't think that any one of my colleagues up here, there was a 12-0 vote in the past, are gonna deviate from the pattern. So I wasn't going to make a big deal, but I wanted to at least explain my rationale and give you a different path forward. If you think that Penn Entertainment has enough money to contribute towards infrastructure improvements or anything else, then I'm open to seconding anybody else's motion. But I feel like I'm alone on this issue, so at least you have an explanation.
Alderman Franco?
So, yeah, so I would, I would like to get to the generalities of a TIF. And if we could have Dave Debo come up, but I just want to verify what I'm going to say is correct, or somebody from Maude?
It'll actually be our CFO, Chris Middick. You want to step up, and also Alexandra?
So when we do a TIF, for example, I'm gonna throw out some numbers. If that TIF is generating $10,000 a year, you know, spread over 12 taxing bodies, and we didn't do anything for 40 years for that land, $10,000 a year, give or take. If we create a TIF, does it not mean that that $10,000, even when that property bear grows, you're still gonna get that $10,000 spread out, just not the extra money until the 23 years are up? So you're not losing money, you're just not gaining the realized value later on, which will, well, we hope it explodes in 23 years. Isn't that kind of how that works? So what you're getting now, you're still gonna get in year 10, 15, 20, 22. Is that correct?
Essentially, yes. The, what happens in a TIF district is the base value, valuation of the property is frozen as of the year that the TIF is established. So in essence, yes, the $10,000 in your hypothetical example would continue to be spread over the 12 or whatever, however many taxing districts you had indicated, Alderman. So that is exactly how the TIF district works. Then the, as the improvements happen, the valuation of the property rises, and the taxes related to the increase in the assessed valuation are put into the TIF project fund, and then those dollars are utilized, in this case, to pay back the bonds that will be issued later on this year.
And I'd just like to make that clear, because we talk about, so maybe talking about this for the next 100 years, who knows? We have to make sure we understand that what, basically, what these taxing bodies are receiving today, they will continue to receive, and with the hopes of someday getting a big bonanza, like, kind of like the outlet mall. I use that example, but that's a great example. But I, but I just want people to know that nobody's losing money, they're just not gaining the extra money, which would not be realized unless we did the development anyway. So I, it's kind of just wanted to make that clear, so we don't have to go through this every time.
That's correct. And in this particular case, it's worthy of note that, that this is a micro TIF. It is specifically attributable only to the casino site. And that casino site is a commercial site that will not generate students for primarily school district purposes. So they should see no increased service needs as a result of the, of the TIF development, excuse me, of the casino development in that TIF district.
I just wanted to make that clear.
And also, I think, to Alderman Franco's point, will you explain, Chris, that it's not subsidizing the casino or any business when you do a TIF? And there is, in that money that the alderman talks about that can go to the school districts, it doesn't exist unless it's created by the business that's coming, coming to town.
That, that is correct.
So there's no money to give away. There's no 50 million to give away unless the casino creates the value of that 50 million?
Correct. Yes. We do not have the 50 million dollars or whatever the number is sitting in a vault that is created as a result of the, the taxes related to the new construction once the TIF is in place.
Thank you. Any other questions? Alderman Warman?
So then, again, I just want to be clear too, then. So for that TIF, you know, everybody talks about how that's gonna be paid back. So whatever the difference is, let's say the revenue generated from that TIF, if it does not meet the obligation of the bond, that's where the casino steps in and meets the remit of that.
Correct.
Okay. So whether it's the money generated from the TIF itself or from the casino, that obligation is met then?
Yes, if the incremental revenue.
Nothing from the city has to.
I'm sorry.
Nothing from the city has to be involved to make up that bond difference, right?
Correct.
Thank you.
Alderman Lash?
Sure. And so just, on this TIF property, this property, were there any existing properties that are going into this TIF that were paying taxes prior to the purchase and creation of the TIF district?
I believe the answer would be yes, that, that there were, that there were properties, I mean, every property unless it's municipally owned or owned by a governmental unit and is tax exempt, pays property tax.
Second question is, did we, did we market this in any other way? Because I never saw a for sale sign out there. So is it possible that we could have got a different developer come in with a different project who, who may or may not have been more willing to pay the full property?
You know, and I'll, I'll jump in right there. Mr. Middick, you know, that's speculation about a whole lot of things. So, you know, we have what we have in front of us, which is the casino. As Alderman Franco pointed out, it's gonna be capped at whatever the taxes was on all the property that the casino's taken over. So the school district isn't ever gonna get any less than they were already getting. But within the period of time of the TIF existence, when it expires, they're gonna get everything. It's gonna be the gift that keeps on giving.
Correct. After the, after the TIF district expires, that, the mechanism is, that is actually declared new property, and it is, the, the overlapping districts have the ability to tax that property the same way they would any other parcel within their borders.
And we've seen that when the TIF expired for the outlet mall, and there was a huge windfall for all the taxing bodies when the outlet mall was built. Is that correct?
Correct. We've, we've seen that there. And then we also, TIF one recently expired here within the downtown area, and we did see, excuse me, the overlapping districts did see an increase in their tax revenues as a result of that as well.
And that was both District 131 and 126, 29.
Correct. Both school, both 129 and 131 were in TIF number one, as you had indicated.
Mr. Alexandra, do you have a point you want to make?
Good evening, everyone. Just to remind everyone, you know, we've been on this journey for a few years now, but the city was very transparent at the beginning when we purchased the subject properties for the casino location, as well as the Biltor Road properties. And originally, we thought, and I made the, I made the comments that evening, that originally, perhaps, the Biltor properties was the right location for the casino. But then, after listening to resident feedback and aldermanic feedback, we pivoted from that position. And again, working with our partner casino, and not to rehash everything, it's all public record, but we made the determination that the properties we acquired allowed us to control our own destiny and secure the future of the casino at the most dynamic, vibrant, high-exposure location across from the Simon Outlet Mall, which is back up and running, almost attracting eight million visitors, over 90% filled again. And so to answer your question, Alderman Lash, we did not market it to anyone else. We simply looked at how we would keep the casino here. And so as you recall, when we, when the council approved the RDA, it was clear. We, this was not a referendum on gaming anymore. That was done years ago. It was simply a choice. Do we keep our casino here, or do we lose it? And so I just want to thank...
Wait a minute, before you, before you, before you go on, I need you to also talk about, when you say keep our casino or lose it, how much money did we initially get from the casino when it first came to the City of Aurora versus now? And how much do we...
I believe we were in the neighborhood of 15 to 16 million a year.
Yeah.
And now we're at just about five, if not less. But more importantly, it was what this city, what this council decided to do with the funds all these years. We did not use, we don't use them like other communities decided, other casino communities, for operations, for salaries. We, we invest them back in the community. We go, we put them back into ward funds. We put them into Quality of Life grants. And so those things have a direct annual impact on the city. And so when that fund shrunk so dramatically, it really put pressure. And COVID did not help. 2020 and 2021 did not help. We've long known that the casino is one of our four pillars of our local economy. So the fact is, every indication we have, every projection, and the RDA secures it, is that we're gonna get back up to where we should be, if not more. And then opening up to all of you as ward aldermen and aldermen at large, a whole new opportunity to look at funding quality of life, mental health, everything that we have to do in this community. But we're gonna do it responsibly. But you can't do it without that fund backwards should be. And so there really was no other use, Alderman Lash, that would have produced this level of revenue, jobs, union, construction jobs. And again, I, I'm sorry, Mayor, I just...
Food and beverage.
Well, food and beverage, a high-quality hotel, and really another magnet to complement what's going on at, at the Chicago Premium Outlet Mall. But I don't, I would be remiss if I didn't thank Brian and all the great folks at Fox Valley Building Trades. They work very hard. They've been very supportive. And last but not least, I know we've got casino representatives here. We have worked very, very hard, as you know, Your Honor. And I guess our feeling was, we are very fortunate that we have such a successful and well-known casino company as a partner. I think most communities would be envious of this partnership because it almost ensures success, rather than going with a startup or fledgling casino gaming group. So we're very confident in our projections and very confident in the work that staff did, and David Debo, Trevor Dick, Tracy Vasek, Ed Seben. This is really a culmination of quite a journey, a journey which almost saw us lose our casino. And now we are at this moment tonight. So very much appreciate your support.
Alderman Seville?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The, the original idea to move the casino from the downtown was not originally from the casino, it was from the City of Aurora. Going back to three administrations, the Weisner, the O'Connor, and the Urban Administration, we actually approached them and over a period of some time, years, to convince them to consider the move. In order to allow that to occur, the city approached our state legislators to change, to change the law to actually move the casino out of the downtown and off the river and onto land. That was no small feat. That took literally years. Plus the fact that was mentioned that we were busy trying to compile properties to land bank to get some type of economic development there, because the Farnsworth High and Quarter has long been an underutilized economic quarter. It's never reached its potential. It started to with the Premium Outlet Mall. This'll be another piece of the puzzle, but there's still potential out there at this whole corridor to add to what we're trying to do, to increase economic development, to create jobs, and, and to benefit the taxpayers of the City of Aurora with increased revenue. So there's a long history of getting this to, to occur, to get us to this point this evening. And as was mentioned, it is the increment that will be used and paid back by the casino, regardless of whether it's the casino itself or Penn Central personally. The, the fact that we're doing this from this compilation of properties, including the, the two on Church Road, shows the vision of the city in trying to advance the economic cause of our citizenry, citizenry. And I think there should be a lot to commend it. And Alex is right, we are receiving upwards of $16 million a year for a short period of time in revenue. My ward personally would like us to get back to that point again because it benefits substantially, because I represent about three-quarters in older neighborhoods in my ward. We would like to get that revenue back. This will help us be able to do that. And again, benefit the citizenry of our, of our community.
Alderman Smith?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I feel like we glazed over the Quality of Life Program. And if we could just have a little more clarification on specifically what the Quality of Life Program is and what it does, because I think it's really important that if we lose those Quality of Life dollars, that will, that will be a great loss to a lot of people in our community that have a tremendous amount of needs. Did you not hear me? Sorry.
I'm sorry.
Was I not, was I not speaking into my mic? My apologies.
So let me just get off topic. I had Quality of Life funds.
Funds.
Qualified not-for-profits in Aurora. Either they're based in Aurora, or they serve Aurora residents.
People with needs.
And I know this was very, this was very near and dear to Alderman heart, Bernhardt.
Yes, it was. Absolutely.
As it is to many of you. But I think last year, and I'm looking maybe in the back, I think we hit a record number of folks who applied and were granted with your approval Quality of Life grants. In addition, obviously, it funds the ward funds. But there are a lot of not-for-profits over the years who have benefited greatly, and have grown and strengthened because of Quality of Life funds. The food pantries benefit from Quality of Life, youth programs, mental health. The food pantries benefit from quality of life, youth programs, mental health. Cultural and heritage type organizations. So it's really been an impressive history of quality of life tied to the casino gaming funds tied directly to benefits in the community.
No casino, no quality of life money.
Well, again, we would have a heck of a time filling that gap, that financial gap. And where would it come from? The general fund. I think we talked about this at budget time a couple of times.
Yes, yes.
So now you're playing a game of chess, moving money from the budget to fill the needs shown by, demonstrated by the not-for-profits, but at what expense out of the general fund?
These are the quality of life grants.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So I hit them, what we call basic needs, education and youth, museums, our SHAPE Fund, which benefits the police department, the, you know, community groups, mental health groups, and last but not least, seniors. So there's a breakdown, we could resend this to you if you'd like. It was the, the 2023 quality of life breakdown.
Thank you. I don't need it resend.
Okay.
I knew the answer to my question, but I wanted to hear it.
Okay.
Outwardly in the public today.
Alderman Yamas.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to make sure that I'm on the same page here. We are on Agenda Item 23441, right?
Correct.
Is that correct? That has nothing to do with the TIF or with the RDA that we approved several months ago. So I don't know why we're still going back to that. As much as I appreciate the refresher from staff on that RDA and how those casino funds help our community, it's unnecessary for us to have to repeat everything for every single meeting. Alderman Lash, you were present at the meeting several months ago when we voted on the RDA. You and your friends showed up and disrupted our meeting. I know you remember that because the rest of us remember that. And we remember that some of your friends were kicked out of that meeting. And when they were kicked out, one of your friends cursed at a police officer and cursed at all of us. You remember all of this, you know all of this. We know why you're asking this question, we know why you're voting, no? And it has nothing to do with what's actually on the table, which is a preliminary, preliminary plan in the plat for the casino development. If you have a question or an issue about that, this would be the time and place to ask that question. But for us to bring up things that we voted on six months ago, it's just unnecessary. It's unprofessional, you're wasting staff's time here, you're wasting everyone's time. That's not what we're voting on today. So why aren't we discussing it?
All right, with that, you know, I think we've pretty much had enough discussion. Madam Clerk, there's been a motion in the second. We call the roll.
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masseyakos?
Yes.
Alderman Donnell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bead?
Yes.
Alderman Lash?
No.
Alderman Warman?
Yes.
10 yes, 1 no.
Motion carries, the ordinance is adopted. Resolution is approved. Madam Clerk, will you read the next item?
230443, an ordinance amending Chapter 22 Code of Ordinances pertaining to harassment and discrimination prohibitions.
There's been a motion by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Garza. Are there any questions or discussions on this ordinance? There being no questions or discussions on this item, Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masseyakos?
Yes.
Alderman Donnell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bead?
Yes.
Alderman Lash?
Yes.
Alderman Warman?
Yes.
11 yes, 0 no.
Motion carries, the ordinance is adopted. Madam Clerk, will you read the next item?
230447, an ordinance amending Section 48-57 of the Code of Ordinances effective July 1st, 2023, and establishing the utility rates for water and sewer services provided within the city there.
Second.
A motion by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Garza. Are there any questions or discussions regarding this ordinance? There being none, Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masseyakos?
Yes.
Alderman Donnell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bead?
Yes.
Alderman Lash?
Yes.
Alderman Warman?
Yes.
11 yes, 0 no.
Motion carries, the resolution is approved. Madam Clerk, will you read the last item?
23-0466, a resolution authorizing the execution of a property purchase and sales contract for property at 101 North Lake and 102 North River Street.
There's been a motion made by Alderman Franco, seconded by Alderman Garza. Are there any questions, discussions on this resolution? There being none, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masseyakos?
Yes.
Alderman Donnell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Sorry. Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Sorry. Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bead?
Yes.
Alderman Lash?
No.
Alderman Warman?
Yes.
10 yes, 1 no.
Motion carries, the resolution is approved. I made a slight error on 23-0447, I called it a resolution, it's actually an ordinance. The ordinance is adopted. Let's go to the last item, 23-0468.
And then we also have one more after that.
Okay.
23-0.
Mayor? Based on.
Alderman Masseyakos?
Based on advice from Leal Council, I'll be recusing myself from Resolution 23-0468.
So both Alderman Warman and Alderman Masseyakos are both going to recuse themselves from 23-0468. Let the record reflect that both of them are leaving city council chambers. At this time, Clerk, give them a second to exit the room, and we will continue with the vote. Did we already have a motion, a second on this?
I didn't read that.
Can we have, oh, I'm sorry, read that, read the item, Madam Clerk?
23-0468, an ordinance amending the annual budget for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2022, and ending December 31st, 2022.
Second.
A motion made by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Garza. Are there any questions or discussions regarding this ordinance? There being none, Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Donnell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bead?
Yes.
Alderman Lash?
No.
8 yes, 1 no.
Motion carries, the ordinance is adopted. We have Alderman Masseyakos come back in, we got one more item.
Can I ask a question? We, we might have some confusion. We, we don't know if we both, or we all voted on 280440 and also 280441. We're not sure.
We had a great deal of discussion. We had a 1 vote.
Yeah, we might have.
No, we had 2 votes.
We did both. Okay, good. We just want to make sure.
Thank you. The roll call was the same.
Okay, good, thanks.
We've got Alderman Masseyakos coming back in, Alderman Warman remaining out. No, Alderman Warman, he'll stay out, Alderman Masseyakos is coming back in. Okay. So yeah, Alderman Warman, so Alderman Masseyakos is back. Let the record reflect he's back in city council. So Madam Clerk, you read the final item under unfinished business.
23-0472, a resolution to execute a memorandum of understanding with the Boys and Girls Club of Aurora for a possible land donation adjacent to Garfield Park.
Motion made by, is there a motion? Second made by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Franco. Are any questions or discussions on this resolution? There being none, Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masseyakos?
Yes.
Alderman Donnell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bead?
Yes.
Alderman Lash?
Yes.
10 yes, 0 no.
Motion carries, resolution is approved. And we have Alderman Warman returned to city council. Let the record reflect, Alderman Warman is back in city council. Let's go on to new business. Is there a motion to spin the rules, consider items in the new business?
Second.
A motion made by Alderman Franco, Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Alderman Smith. You said Harper.
Alderman Smith. This, it's going to take me a while.
My, my.
Alderman Smith, oh my God. Alderman Smith, and then Alderman Franco.
Can I ask you, you don't call me Alderman Jenkins?
Say Alderman Franco, wow. It's going to take me a while. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masseyakos?
Yes.
Alderman Donnell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?